Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Jim? That's taken care of?
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, is everyone ready to start? Any last minute adjustments to make? Okay. We have a quorum here and we have Jim Cornwell and Dave Brower on the line. So we have all seven planning commissioners present this evening. Jen, did you leave the drawings behind or did you take them? Okay. Do any of, does anyone over there have the drawings? Okay, can you guys share over there? Okay. All right. So we've established that we need to wear masks in here. We've established that we have connection. We've established that we are live on Narberth Civic Facebook. And we're all ready to take a deep, cleansing breath. And I will at 7:10 PM call the July 6th. This is actually our regular, is it a regular meeting? No, it's a special meeting of a Narberth Planning Commission order. So thank you.
But you're muted, though.
We are all muted on the Zoom, but we do need to hear our outside voices. Let me go over a few of the meeting protocols. If you're in Borough Hall this evening with us, if Borough does request that everyone present physically wear a mask, then we are all masked tonight. We understand and we are in this room. We are, the sound part of this meeting is being conveyed through a conference line, not through our computers or our computer microphones. So that does make it difficult for people in the audience who are watching by Zoom to know who is speaking. They don't get the cues of the yellow box. So I will hope you can remember when you're speaking to just say, "This is Heidi, this is Jim," so that everyone knows and who's watching on Zoom has a better chance of figuring out who's speaking. I think those are the, if you are in the audience tonight, we will take public comment on each agenda item. We will also have public comment for general questions and comments at the end of the meeting. When I call for public comments, if you could signal us by dropping a note in the chat or using the raise hand function that Zoom provides so that we know you'd like to speak. These meetings are kind of complicated with a lot of crosstalk. So we hope you'll respect that and not jump in without raising your hand or sending a note and being recognized. So with that in mind, I would like to start with our agenda. I will begin with announcements and updates. In terms of my update, I think all of you know that we will have our regular Planning Commission meeting on next Monday, July 12. And the main agenda item for that meeting will be to have a public discussion about the historic district ordinance. The whole borough has been notified by mail and by various social media tools about that topic for that meeting. The mailing included a frequently asked question, a two-page summary, and a proposed historic district boundary map. And so everyone in the borough is welcome to attend that meeting. And we will discuss what that historic district ordinance entails and we will answer questions. It's also possible that we will have a 3M with on our agenda that evening. As you recall at our last meeting last week, the applicant made a presentation of the preliminary plan. And if we remain on schedule, we will need to reconsider that and vote on a recommendation of council. So those are the two items for our meeting next Monday. In terms of other pending applications, if you're keeping score at home, we have an application, a 32 Sabine, as you know, to demolish a three-unit house and build a twin. That was originally slated for this evening's meeting. The applicant did not provide to us final calculations or facade size until very late last night. It was not on our agenda because we put our agenda together Friday. We didn't have complete information. So it was determined this morning that because we received that information so late that we would not have that on our agenda tonight and that we will have it on a future meeting. We also have an application, I believe, of 230 Dudley, which is a basically subdivision application, which I believe will be in our August, our August agenda, I believe. And I believe that is the pending, actively pending subdivision and land development application. So does anyone in the commission have any questions that are upcoming agenda or work flow? Okay, thank you. I do not have any other announcements or updates. Does anyone else? Do you, from the County Planning Commission, have any announcements or updates for us? Excuse me, Mike?
Yes, this is Mike Nerkwich. I'd say the one thing I might mention is simply that there's an announcement about the American Recovery Funds for nonprofit organizations. And so you can find that on the county website, montpilpa.org. And if you search for Recovery Office, it will take you there and they have more information on that.
That's a new grant program from the county, then recovery fund helping organizations, nonprofits.
And your name is?
My name is Chloe Moore, also from the county. Hi, everybody.
Thank you, Chloe. And thank you for that information. And so anyone interested in that can go to the county's webpage and find out how to apply for that grant from a nonprofit organization. Okay, thank you. All right, then. So we have two items of business. This is Todd, the county commission chair. We have two items of business tonight. First is the, a new tentative plan for 146 Marion Avenue, which is different from the tentative plan we saw before, a few months ago. It's been officially resubmitted as a new application. The second item on our, and we are not obliged to make a recommendation on this this month. Council is not obliged to act on this application until its August meeting. The second item on our agenda is to discuss potential additional revisions to the zoning code that pertain to infill housing and accessory dwelling units. You'll recall that earlier this year, we agreed to look at provisions for infill housing later this year. And we accelerated that deadline, partly that schedule of that work, partly because of the historic district ordinance and the way this might help support property owners who find themselves within the historic district. And also, we are looking at accessory dwelling units because council asked us to put that on our work plan. So today, Heidi and Jim Cornwell and I have worked on some concepts that we'd like to discuss with you and get direction from the Planning Commission so that we can develop them more fully and bring them back potentially for shaping into an ordinance one day. So that is our agenda for the evening. First, so we will start with subdivision and land development application from 146 Marion Avenue, tentative plan. I believe that we have with us tonight via Zoom, we have, I do see Chris Yon and I thought I saw Fred Promhold, who are here on behalf of the applicant. I don't know if anyone else here is representing the applicant. So I will ask if either Fred or Chris could walk us through this application. And then I will ask, we have with us this evening Kevin Walsh, the Borough Zoning Officer, Eric Johnson, the Borough's Engineer, and the representative of Montgomery County Planning Council or Commission, all of whom have reviewed this application. And I would ask them to summarize their comments, paying particular attention to matters they feel merit discussion by the Planning Commission, plus Planning Commission discussion and public comment. So with that, I will ask either Fred or Chris to lead us through this application. Thank you both for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Todd. This is Chris. I'm here. I see Fred. And I guess once he's unmuted, he might want to say something in the beginning here. I see that we have Jack Burns.
Am I unmuted or no? This is Fred. Can I be heard?
Yes.
We hear you, Fred.
For whatever reason, my video was not on and I don't know why it's not coming on. And so, Chris, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thanks, Fred. So we have Jack Burns, the architect, on tonight. The applicants are not on tonight. They are out of the country, I believe, at the moment. And so if it's all right, I will share my screen.
Can you, okay, great.
Can you see the command now?
Yeah, so we can see your screen, Fred.
Okay, so just to bring us up to speed from where we were, this was the plan that was submitted, I believe, in February of this year, which was a plan to, or I'll start even further back. This is the property. The north is to the top of the plan. This is Marion Avenue going from left to right on the top. And along the bottom is Rockland Avenue. The site fronts on both of those streets. It's what some people would call a through lot or a double frontage lot. On the other side of Rockland Avenue is Lower Marion Township. And so there's an existing home here with a detached garage. The home fronts Marion Avenue. The address is 146 Marion. It has a detached garage, two-car detached garage, which faces Rockland Avenue. And so the proposal here is to demolish the existing features and to build two new twin buildings, so four units. Two of those would base Marion Avenue and two facing Rockland Avenue. So these are the old plans that we had. And just to flip back and forth with the new plans, some of the comments from the Planning Commission back in, I believe it was April, were that the units were not substantially similar. On the old plans, we had on the Rockland, and I'm sorry, I'm going to skip back for a second. For parking, Marion Avenue does, you can have a credit for an on-street parking space. So we're not providing any off-street parking for the two Marion Avenue units. There is no, there are no parking credits for Rockland Avenue. And so we are showing two off-street parking spaces in the third lot layer. The original plans had one as a garage, a front-loaded garage, and the other in the third lot layer. And so one of the comments was that the units were not substantially similar. So we've now switched that to where they are exactly the same. One of the other comments was that along the common party wall between the units was not exactly the same. They were shifted a little bit because of this angle in Rockland Avenue. And so we've corrected that. We've also added some street trees and just have taken the sketch a little bit further. But as Mr. Gressi said, we are still in the tentative sketch phase, which is when we're really looking at the bulk zoning and, you know, building and driveway layout not into fully engineered yet. So we don't have grading. We don't have stormwater. We don't have erosion controls. We don't show any of those things yet. They would come later. We do show potential stormwater management systems in the front of the buildings in between those facing Marion Avenue and Marion Avenue. And we have some on the Rockland side as well. They are these rectangular dashed boxes. We do meet the bulk zoning requirements in terms of lot area, lot width. We do have a zoning chart on the side of the plan here. We meet the front setback, the side, the rear, the building coverage, impervious coverage, the minimum and maximum frontage area. One additional approval we would need, or no, I'm sorry. On the old plans, we needed a special exception approval for the front-loaded garage. Now that we've gotten rid of that and we just have the parking spaces in the third lot layer, we no longer need the special exception that we did before. And so, you know, we are viewing this as a, as a by right plan. We do have review letters from the zoning officer and the Borough Engineer and the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And I'm happy to go through some of those if this is an appropriate time to do that or if you'd like me to answer any questions first, I'm happy to do that as well.
Thank you, Chris. This is Todd Brestnigan. I will ask, if that is your, if that's your introduction to the project, I would like to ask then the zoning officer, the engineer, and then PCC to make their own comments, which, after which point we can have a discussion and response. Is that okay, Chris? Or is there anything else you'd like to add about this project?
That sounds good. No, I guess just that, you know, we've been at this one for some time and we've made changes along the way that we hope have addressed some of the concerns that we heard in April. I know it's not always possible to meet all of them. But we are, we're back again tonight to try to take this further along.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. I will start with Kevin Walsh, the Borough, Borough Zoning Officer. Frantically searching through my, there you are, Kevin.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Thank you for joining us, Kevin. We appreciate it. Could you give us the highlights of your review, please? In particular, any issues you feel the planning issue should be considering or discussing tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Todd. So based on the April 26 resubmission, as Chris discussed, everything provided on the plan is by right to this point. However, at the preliminary stage, these subdivision and land development ordinance does require additional building height, roof pitch requirements, twin house building type standards, elevations, things like that. So this, to me, was almost like a tentative sketch review with additional details. However, everything provided thus far is by right. So my comment letter, if anyone has it in front of them, my first comment was essentially requesting all those requirements of the preliminary phase, which again is the building height requirements, roof pitch requirements, twin house building type standards, and frontage standards. So I'll need to take a look at those, all of those requirements, hopefully before the final. If everyone's okay with it and they provide them during the final, that's fine with me. Other than that, everything, again, is by right and I have no additional comments.
Okay. Kevin, I do have one question about the definition of a twin house. And I'm wondering if you can weigh in on that for us? I'm going to read from the definitions part of the code, in the back of the code, which says that "A pair of single-family dwellings designed as a single structure with substantially similar halves that shares a vertical party wall on a lot line along the primary frontage line." And that's the phrase I want to focus on, "along the primary frontage line." It appears to me these buildings do not share a party wall along the primary frontage line. Is that an issue that needs to be addressed?
I guess you're suggesting the slight six-foot setback is where you were defining the party walls.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm wondering if I'm reading that correctly or not.
That's possible, that's something we need to revisit?
Okay.
Todd, if you don't mind, I'll do some definitions while Eric's going over his review. I'll try and take a look and we'll circle back to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for looking at that. Okay. So then we'll move on. Eric, good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Yep, good evening.
Eric Johnson, Borough Engineer. Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi. Eric, could you please review the highlights of your review, including any particular issues you think the Planning Commission should be discussing tonight?
Sure. Yeah, so as you said, I reviewed the tentative sketch plan, the resubmission. And the few items that might be good for discussion that came up was that there's a, a proposed subdivision and land development should be coordinated with the existing neighborhood and the community to make sure we have a harmonious development. In particular, for mid-blocks, the intent is that the front yard setbacks match the structures, you know, along that stretch of the block. You know, so the applicant may be meeting a zoning requirement for the setback. However, there's the SADO requirement that's trying to develop a harmonious development. And it appears that these proposed houses have a different setback than some of the properties in proximity to them. I would also point out that Lot 4 has a compliant impervious coverage of 59.8%. However, I do like to caution when we are, a new development is pushing that limit. It does prevent any future patios or other types of uses for the future homeowners on the property. They do, they are proposing a driveway for the two, for lots 3 and 4, with one parking space in the third lot layer. However, it does indicate that they're, on the zoning table, they're providing two parking spots per lot. So you just may want to confirm, you know, if the placement of the cars, I guess that would extend in the second lot layer, if that is appropriate. And one of the, one of the engineering items that will be addressed later, but I bring up, is the two houses facing Rockland are shown to have public sanitary sewer. However, I would note that the sanitary sewer in Rockland stops, stops about 100 feet short of this property. So that would have to be worked out, you know, how sewage would be provided for those properties. Stormwater management will be required as part of development and that would be designed and provided in subsequent submissions. And that because any port, because this plan proposes demolition of an existing structure, you know, that demolition would have to be done and integrated as part of the approval if this plan was to receive, you know, approval from the borough. But that, that kind of sums up the main items in my letter.
Okay. Eric, may I ask a question, do you have some follow-up questions, please? And then I'll ask if anyone else has. In terms of the SADO issue that you raised in your letter, is that an issue that would require a waiver to address?
Which issue?
To be consistent with the neighborhood character.
Shall they coordinate the existing neighborhood and the community? So the SADO requirement is kind of open for interpretation. It reads, "Proposed subdivision and land development shall be coordinated with the existing nearby neighborhood." So the community that a whole may be developed harmoniously. That's the SADO requirement. And then that kind of ties into, you have the zoning setbacks that are permissible, but that may or may not line up with the SADO or with the intention to have a harmonious development. But it's not a specific have to, it, the intention is to have a development that, that fits in, but it's not a hard requirement of a code section.
My understanding of the front setback is that it is a, is it a required bill-to line or is it simply a minimum setback? I mean, could they set the houses back further and be consistent with the code?
So generally, and Kevin can weigh in as well. Generally, a setback is a minimum setback from the road.
Is that correct, Kevin, in this case? Could they set the house back further and still be consistent with zoning code?
I actually brought this up on multiple reviews prior, whereas my previous interpretation that was because the front principal building setback, as per Table 4, didn't state a minimum. It had to be directly on that line. And that, that has been, I guess, challenged and we've deferred to allowing it to be greater than that number.
When you say it's been challenged, I'm not sure I followed. Does that mean they could set this back further? Or is it, would be your interpretation that, that they would have to meet this line?
My original interpretation was that they had to be on that exact line and it has gone. And then additional developments, current proposals have gone beyond that, setting it back additionally. And everyone's been in agreement that that's permitted.
Okay. So there's precedent for allowing a house to set back further than the setback that's required, you're saying. And Eric is saying he finds that setting it back further would be more consistent with that aspect of the SADO. Am I interpreting this correctly?
On my end, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Eric, in terms of the sanitary sewer, if the closest sanitary sewer on Rockland Avenue is 100 feet away, what are the possible options for connecting these properties to a sanitary sewer?
So your option, so there is sanitary sewer along Marion and there is sanitary sewer in Rockland. The way you either, so you either extend the sewer up Rockland to serve the property or you would have to pump it up to the sewer in Marion. So there are two feasible engineering alternatives to solve that. But that would have to be, you know, figured out as part of a development.
And since Rockland Avenue is partly part of Lower Marion Township, would that require coordination with Lower Marion Township to do that?
So I do not know where the exact boundary line runs in Rockland. But generally, coordination is required when you're working on joint road. However it is, the Borough-owned sewer does already exist in the road. But if the property line runs down the center of the road, then, you know, there would be a certain level of coordination, yes.
That routine or is that a special circumstance?
Working along a municipal boundary, that's generally, I mean, one municipality has to work with the other one. You know, and you would just need to coordinate. Effectively, in that case, the largest item that would need to be addressed is traffic and access to properties during construction.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Does anyone in the Planning Commission have any subdivision, land development, zoning questions that they would like to ask at this point? Jen, did you get your questions clarified?
Yeah, I did. But I have an additional question.
Okay, so Jim Spear has a question?
Did we talk about gas or other utility hookups? And do those extend sufficiently along Rockland? Would it get tapped into that?
Eric, did you hear the question? Are there utilities, are there an issue?
So at this stage, the other utilities have not been looked into. However, I can see there is the overhead power lines and utility lines running along the, running close proximity to the property. So again, that would all be played out as part of a fully designed plan.
That would come at a future stage if we determine that. Okay, does anyone else in the Planning Commission have any questions for the zoning officer or the Borough Engineer? Dave or Jim, don't want to leave you off in the wilderness. Do either of you have questions for the zoning officer or the Borough Engineer? No?
I am not in the wilderness by any stretch of the imagination, Todd. I am a little bit concerned about the front yard setback issue. It's going to require a long investigation.
Okay, well, we'll have a discussion.
The intent of the zoning code is that houses along a street in Narberth The intent of the zoning code is that houses along a street in Narberth are desired to come to an agreement among one another about where the fronts, where their fronts are, to avoid a, uh, jack-o'-lantern sort of staggered tooth appearance to the, to the, uh, street scape. So, uh, I'm going to look into, I'm going to want to look into this issue a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will now ask Montgomery County Planning Commission, could you summarize your comments, and particularly anything you feel the, the Planning Commission should be discussing tonight?
Sure. Um, just very briefly, um, we recommended, um, our, our conclusion was that we generally support the Aspen proposal. I would note that this recommendation is based on how the Aspen proposal, um, complies with zoning and whether we see a clear legal reason to deny it. So, since we do not see a clear legal reason to deny it, um, we, our, our standard, um, letter is to support it. That is, however, not to say that we don't, um, want the Aspen to work with the borough, to continue working with the Planning Commission, the Borough Planning Commission, on ways of preserving existing structure. Uh, because we know that several of you on Planning Commission are working with Aspen on that very thing. Furthermore, we know that the borough places a premium on historic preservation. We currently advertising the historic district ordinance and, uh, Narberth, Narberth Town Plan, Narberth 2040, um, as well as the Form 8 code places a premium on it. Uh, so we, we think that's important to recognize. Um, in terms of the detailed comments, we, um, had a hold of a comment from last time about tree replacements, uh, so we just need clarification whether tree replacements will be required. Uh, in the new comments, uh, we just note a few details that need to be provided about landscaping, such as the planting schedule, um, and then we had time about street trees, and on Rockland, um, an additional tree is required, but due to things such as, um, the stormwater facilities, it may not be possible to fit a Bible tree in there, so, um, the code does provide an alternative for that. Um, zoning provides for alternative planting locations of trees or other landscaping at the discretion of council or the zoning officer. And we also suggested using landscaping to enhance screening or buffering between proposed new development and adjacent properties. Um, and, and those were the main comments we had.
Questions? Okay, um, if there's no further questions from the Planning Commission, any questions? Do you have any questions for the applicant? Uh, so, I don't see any questions from the Planning Commission. So, Chris, uh, you had, um, you had said that you would like, uh, to, um, offer a response to those comments from the zoning officer, the engineer, and the county Planning Commission. So, could you, um, would you mind letting us know what your, your thoughts are about those comments?
Yes, so if it's-
Thank you.
I will share my screen again. And so I think the first comment that you brought up, Mr. Resi, and you asked, uh, Mr. Walsh, you know, the, this was the old plan we had from February, where, you know, it's a twin building, and we do have the, uh, the building touching, or both halves of the building touching each other on the primary frontage line. And one of the major concerns of this building was the width of the building and how wide it looks. And so, you know, one of the major changes that, I shouldn't say major change, one of the changes we made, uh, that we thought was an improvement to this plan, to, you know, make it look a little more like individual buildings instead of one long one, was to have that break in the middle. And so, I guess, we did that as a response to some of the comments. If that, if it's determined that that doesn't meet the requirement, then we, uh, we could adjust, uh, and we could fill that, that gap in. But that, that is why we made the changes, try to address some comments from before. Uh, one of the other, I think that was your first comment from, uh, Mr. Johnson, one of the ones is sewer. You know, uh, I guess we do have a couple options here, if we did need to extend the sewer in Rockland Avenue. That is something that, you know, we've done on other projects. I don't recall one in the borough, but we have done it in other townships, in Lower Marion Township, they have a improvement construction permit for that, so if we needed to coordinate with them, uh, we know the process on what to do. Um, for the front yard setback, I guess I have two ways I'd like to address that. The, uh, I'd argue that the zoning code says that, uh, you're supposed to have, and I guess I should read the exact language, um, but that it's supposed to be similar to that on the block. And so, this is a blow-up of the zoning map. You can see Marion Avenue on the right and Rockland, and so if I zoom in a little further here, just to have this block, you'll notice that this lot right here in the center is the subject parcel. And so you'll notice that that house is actually the one that's further setback on the entire block. And so if we just draw a straight line, I'm going to choose these houses over here. If I zoom back out again, you'll see that some of those are twins, there's a line that runs through them, same thing here. So if I, I zoom back in again, and I draw a line from the front of those buildings all the way across, you'll see that, let's just try to be consistent with the, parallel with the street, that there's probably one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten houses, uh, on this part of the block that are all in line. There's these few in the center that are set further back. And so the zoning code, uh, in, and I think it says in neighborhoods, makes an attempt to, uh, have consistent front yards on the same side of the street, on a block, by Table 13, which sets the front yard setback. And so that's how that tenant, I'll call it, or purpose in the zoning code was addressed by that Table, uh, 13, that, that requires certain front yard setbacks. I think just another picture of that, this is the Montgomery County letter, uh, on the fourth page of their letter is an aerial photograph, and you can see the same thing, where you can see these houses on the southwest corner, going out to the northeast corner, that on both ends of the block are somewhat similar, and it's just these three in the center that are out, and so, or off the line. And so when you take a median, uh, you, and you numbered all the number, you, you line them all up in the chart, how far they are from, uh, the curb or from the right-of-way line, you, the median is the, the one that's directly in the center. And given how many of the, which is different from an average, where you would add them up and divide, how many of these are close to the street, uh, on this whole half of the street, and some others on this other side, that's why the median is that thirty-four foot dimension. So I believe we do comply with that, no waiver would be required. I think that, uh, we comply with it by complying with, uh, that section of, uh, that table in the, um, in the zoning code. Uh, one of the other comments, uh, from Mr. Johnson had to do with, uh, the parking, and so, the parking for lots one and two is listed as two spaces. The reason for that is that according to, uh, Table 12, uh, for Marion Avenue on the 100 block, each property gets one parking space credit for every twenty-four point five, two feet of property frontage. And so there's one hundred feet of lot width, which puts fifty feet on each of these, and so you would get two parking space credits for each of those lots. So that's why we have two listed for lots one and two, uh, lots three and four are just listed as one space, because we don't get any parking space credit, but we have the one parking space in the third lot layer. Uh, I think those were the major things. I know there were some other things noted about the impervious coverage being very close to the maximum. Uh, I'll note that lots one and two, they are at fifty point eight percent, where you're permitted sixty, and so we have nine point two percent to work with. If you just took ten percent of thirty-eight oh eight, you'd get three hundred and eighty, and so, you know, we're somewhere in, call it the three hundred and sixty range probably for, for what they could use for, say, an outdoor patio. For lots three and four, we are very close at fifty-eight point one and fifty-nine point eight, and really the reason for that is the, uh, this is the driveway. Now, when you have to put the parking in the third lot layer, you can see how long of the driveway that takes to get, uh, the parking space all the way to the third lot layer. And so those are, uh, I guess, a, a couple of the things that I heard. Most of the, uh, items from the county had to do with landscaping, which are things that we would, uh, document during the preliminary plan stage. We did show a couple of street trees just to pretty up the plan a little bit, uh, but certainly the tree replacement requirements, uh, would be addressed at preliminary plan.
Chris, could I add one thing to what you just said? And for whatever reason, I, uh, when I try to join by video, I'm told that, uh, I'm not permitted to join, but, um, I'm here by audio, if everyone can hear me. The only thing I wanted to comment on was this definition of twin house, and I look at that definition, and, uh, frankly, I think it's confusing and unclear. But let's assume it means that there needs to be a party wall at the point where the homes, uh, are, uh, along that, uh, uh, frontage line. Uh, I guess, looking at this plan, those porches and that portion of the building immediately behind it could just be shifted inward, so that the notch that is now in between the building on the lot could just be flipped to the outside of the building, rather than to the, uh, along the, uh, the lot line between the buildings. And you wouldn't have any different calculations in terms of, uh, uh, lot area or, uh, any coverages.
Um, this is Todd again. Kevin, were you able to evaluate that yet, or are you still considering that, that question?
Yeah, I mean, looking through the, all the definitions, including the new ordinances, I think it's a good point that the party wall has to be existing at the primary frontage line, which, um, Chris, which, if you don't mind zooming in, kind of where you make a, um, addition sign, uh, both on, yeah, three and four, I'm wanting to, um, right behind the porches in that gap there, yeah. I think that, yeah, the party wall does need to be right at that, exactly, right there. Uh, and however you do that, whether that's providing more impervious coverage of building coverage, or reversing your porch layouts, that's up to you. But I, but I do think it's a valid question based on the definitions.
Yeah, and, and I would only add to that, I, I think Kevin's, uh, substituted the word for "at," uh, where the code, or substituted the word "at" for the word "along," and I think it's "along" that makes that, uh, provision a little bit confusing. I think "at" makes it a little bit clearer, uh, but, uh, it's something that is easily adjusted by this, uh, plan, if that were to be the interpretation.
Okay.
And I, I guess if I could add it, uh, I thought we were making the plan better by doing that. Here's the old plan, where we had kind of wraparound porches on the outside, and the concern about the width. We were trying to break up the center, and we, we purposely made that, uh, fourteen feet wide, seven feet on, on each side, to make it look like a, um, you know, a side yard setback, minimum seven yards, uh, seven-foot side yard setback. And so, to address that, we, we simply could just mirror both of these, uh, but I'm curious whether that, whether you, whether the Planning Commission believes that yields a better result.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure this is, if the determination by the zoning officer is, they have to, uh, you know, be, uh, by each other, that's the determination, but I'll ask, does anyone from the Planning Commission have any opinion about this? I, I see no, no opinions, but I, I think that if the interpretation is the code requires the facade of the building to meet each other along the frontage line, where, you know, where the, where the, uh, subdivision is, then I think that's what they need to do.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I would only add, Mr. Resi, that, uh, up until this meeting, uh, based on review of the zoning officer's letter, we thought we complied, but if that determination, uh, based on your, uh, question has been changed, uh, I don't think there would be any reason for us to, uh, question that interpretation or seek relief from it. We'd simply comply with it. It's a very easy adjustment on the plan. And I, and I think we would have that notch, uh, on the, the outside of, uh, each of these units, rather than the inside, and, uh, I, I think you'd get much of the same, uh, impact, uh, by reason of that notch being on the outside.
Okay, thank you. Um, Planning Commission discussion, uh, I'm sorry, um, I apologize. Mr. Young, did you have anything else that you wanted to say, or Mr. Fromholme, in way of response to any of the comments that were made? Are you-
Not, I think Mr. Young covered it, and, uh, just fine.
Okay, thank you. Then are there any Planning Commission, Planning Commission discussion of this application? Um, Adam, please, introduce yourself.
Uh, just, uh, putting a point of question on this, that I assume the party wall, the, is there any information that the porches can't be decorated, as opposed to the facade? I have a party wall, but the porches are just, that's correct?
That's correct. Uh, I don't believe a, uh, porch is required to go the full length of the frontage, so nice when they do.
Actually, it's more common that they don't.
Yeah, but, but they don't have to. Um, and what Mr. Fromholme suggested was just simply sliding that piece through the building over, so it's just perfectly-
Well, I, they were, the original plan was a rounder porch.
Yeah.
You know, for the porch, also comments, but I just wanted to clarify that there's difference between the porch and the maine cannot-
Yeah, yeah. The porches don't have to, about, just the, just the frontages. Um, any other commissioner? Uh, Jim Spear, say hello.
Oh, hi, this is Jim Spear. I have, I have a question about, I, I realize why you're doing it. You have, um, the facade projected, I believe, they're going to be one-story projections, not projections, I'm sorry, they're, I don't even know how to describe it, they're, the facades are-
The sides, the sides of the frontage are one-story.
The, the sides of the front are one-story, so they, they sort of have a, sort of snaggy sense.
And then they setback in the second and third floor, they setback in the-
Right, 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 thank you. So, will that portion of the building be constructed differently than the porch, or will it, you know, will it have its own roof, or will it have a continuous roof with the porch?
If that question is for me, and I, and I understand it right, we show a dash line on the plan where the second and third floors would be set back from the first floor. And the reason we show that is to show that, you know, we intend to comply with the facade area calculations, you know, once we get into the architectural plans and the preliminary plan stage. Uh, but yes, my thought is the roof would continue from above the porch, uh, back above that, uh, first six feet of the first floor, and then the second floor would be setback that, second and third floor would be setback that six feet beyond it.
I know you're not, um, required to have worked this out at this stage, but I think, uh, Mr. Spear was wondering, do you have an idea of how the roof would work? Would that just, I mean, you'll, you'll have to somehow pitch the roof up the second-story facade there. I mean, in truth, it's not uncommon, uh, but have you thought about how that's actually going to work? Have a one-story-
Yes, well, this, sorry, this is Jack Burns, I haven't spoken this evening. Uh, we have not, we do not have much design for that as of right now. We're still kind of going back and forth with it, uh, but whatever it is, we'll comply with the setback requirements.
It's just a little unusual, because none of the facade will be visible from the street. It'll be behind, entirely behind a porch.
No, 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 with, with dormers and windows and scoops, there's, there's a, I, I can think of a number of good ways to make it work.
Okay. Um, are there questions from the planning commission?
I guess, this is Jennifer, G S P N. And similar to Jim's comment, uh, I was thinking along, uh, like a similar line of would the roof, if you decided to have a saying, um, at that six foot step back somehow, you know, without seeing elevation, it's really hard to tell what is, what it would be. But, you know, in terms of following along the technical definition, could you, would the roof be considered an extension of that party wall if you wanted to keep that open for plantings or whatever at the ground floor? I don't know. I, I think it's something that, um, will be interesting to see what ultimately, you know, how that plays out in elevation.
Okay. Other, Dave or Jim, do either of you have, uh, comments?
Not at this time, Todd.
Okay. Dave, do you have any comments?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. So what I would like to do now, um, is invite public comments on this application. Um, we do see a number of people, uh, from the public in this meeting. If you would like to comment, um, we're all looking at a million directions at once. Uh, could you please just put a note in the chat so that we are aware that you would like to comment? Okay. Um, I see that Alexandra Ting, uh, would like to ask a question. So, uh, welcome and please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, I have a question which I'm not sure you can answer, but I, I am curious to know, um, how this all fits into the context of our last, the last discussion when, and I may have missed a discussion. So the time in April when this, uh, the earlier version of this plan was submitted, um, there was a, a lot, there was talk about, you know, that, that the applicants would continue to consider keeping the house and explore options and how that would work. It seemed like they were concerned about financially making as much money off of the, the buildings as they would be, would do if they had, if they built the four twins. So my question is, and I don't know if you can answer it because it may be private discussions, but, um, I'd like to know how this, how the, you know, we're just reviewing these plans, which may be the point of this discussion, but I, I think as a resident, and I think I'm probably joined by a lot of people, we want to know what's going on, uh, with the consideration of keeping the house, the existing house. And, and why are we not talking about another plan or, you know, how to do that? In other words, you know, how another structure can be built or structures can be built on the property to, uh, fulfill what are the applicant's financial requirements are?
Okay. Um, I will, um, I feel like the planning commission has an obligation to answer that question. And I will answer it. And I will also, after I answer it, invite the applicant to answer if you wish. Um, for those of you who weren't at the last, um, planning commission meeting, as Ms. Ting said, um, there was a lengthy discussion about the possibility of, um, keeping the house that exists now, but also allowing for some, some development to occur, uh, on the other portions of the lot, particularly the side of the lot. Um, both the planning commission and the applicant pledged to have conversations with each other about what the options for that might be. Um, and I can tell you that those conversations are occurring, that we are looking at different sketches and alternatives that may allow that to happen. And we're looking at, uh, what the, uh, issues might be for that, uh, from the, from a zoning and subdivision point of view, to really get our arms around, um, what, what actions might be needed for the, for that path to be pursued. Um, and I will, I will say personally that we're very grateful, um, for the effort the applicant's team has made to have those conversations with us. At this point though, we don't have, um, anything to show, um, in, in terms of any concepts that we, you know, that the applicant would like to bring forward or that we would, we would like to suggest. Um, the applicant, uh, as, as you recall at the last meeting, said they would like to, they would like to, um, proceed on a dual path. That while they were, um, happy to entertain these conversations about alternatives, they were committed to, uh, seeing this application through as well. And so tonight, uh, we are seeing a continuation in this conversation of that, that path, which is to, um, review this application, which, uh, is our obligation under the law when a property owner makes an application for land developments, our obligation to review it. So we are, we are trying to explore , uh, other options. And if, and when one becomes, um, viable, um, you will, you will see it, uh, here at the planning commission. With that, I'll ask Fred or Chris if you would like to comment.
Uh, Todd, I think what you said was, uh, fair and accurate.
Can I ask another, like, part of a question?
Sure.
Is, okay, so is the reason for pursuing this application, uh, because of the fact that you are now entertaining a historic overlay? And then if that passes, their option for demolition of the existing structure will not be possible. Um, so is that the reason for pursuing this particular part of their, their, you know, applications and not, not working up the other possibility right now or as much?
I'll have to ask if the applicant would care to respond to that and speak to your ten.
I, I, I think, uh, simply we, uh, are, we have, uh, plans and, uh, that are on parallel tracks, if you will. This plan is, uh, a plan that, uh, is developed and, and the application has been filed. The other, uh, ideas that are being discussed are at this point ideas, and, uh, those ideas are, are on a parallel track.
Because my concern is that once, if this is approved, that, um, the applicant will drop the other option. And I think probably my concern is shared by other people from what I've heard, um, and not pursue it. Because this is what they really prefer to do. And I'm not sure if that's true or not, but that it seems a little bit, I don't know, suspicious to me. And I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about it because I would like to know whether, if this is really based on, um, financial gain, which it sounded like, um, then, uh, how, how is the borough, how's, how are you all figuring, helping them figure out what the comparative cost is or how, and the gain and like the profit? Are you, are you actually working on that?
And I, I'll, I'll answer this, although this may not, uh, fully answer your question. And that is, in exploring alternatives, uh, we're doing just that. And, uh, we will need to see what might result, uh, from an alternative idea by way of, uh, plan opportunity for development of this property. And of course, there would be an opportunity at that point to compare, uh, what plan opportunity may be available, uh, with some type of, uh, code amendment, and then compare it to the plan opportunity that, uh, may be offered by, uh, this plan and, uh, assess, uh, you know, the, the circumstances that exist as, as we move along. And, uh, one of the concerns you always have is how quickly, uh, uh, some alternative is made available. Uh, we're discussing ideas, uh, whether those ideas, uh, bear fruit is another question, and what kind of fruit they bear is, is another question, and when, and, and so forth. So, uh, we, we're keeping, uh, both, uh, balls in play.
Thank you.
Um, and I would like to clarify one thing, um, to the public. Um, you know, you, you probably recall from previous projects that our, our land development process has three steps. Um, a tentative step, tentative plan, which we're reviewing tonight, then a preliminary plan, which has far more information about things like sewer and, and stormwater and, and the three dimensional articulation of the building, and then a final plan, which, um, really finalizes and nailed down, nails down all of the, the issues. Each of those, at a minimum, can take three months. Um, so tonight, uh, we are at the very beginning of what, not the very beginning, but in the first phase of what, a process that will at least have, uh, two more phases. And so any action, any recommendations the commission makes either this month or next month, any actions the council takes on this application this month or next month, is the first step in a several step process. And so, um, any, I would not say that because any action is or isn't taken tonight, that that means everything else before going conclusion. There's still many steps to go through and many months to keep working on this. And, um, we will take advantage of that time to continue, uh, conversations on the, uh, the other, um, track as well. Um, I would like to move on. I see a question, uh, from David Verdell. David, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Pressing Commission members. Uh, I guess I was, you kind of answered the other questions. This is more of a, from Alex. This is more of a statement where I certainly hope you all take the, the time. I know you are, but just to reiterate that, reiterate that and continue discussing, uh, preserving this, the structure of the home that is currently there. Um, because it's, you know, it's, it's part of the history of the borough, uh, maintains the character of the borough, although I don't know what the new homes will look like. And, uh, I certainly hope that you all continue moving down a path of preserving, uh, that, that home. Uh, the question I would have for the, the applicant is you did mention something about some, the, the costs in exploring other plans. Um, and I, this is a question I asked for at the last meeting of, of another development occurring in the borough. Uh, what is the approximate, um, price that you're looking at for these homes? I'm not holding you to an exact number, but just out of my own curiosity, I know others have been asking, what, what do you think is an approximate range of the cost for these four new homes that you're looking at?
This is Fred Fromhold. Uh, I have no idea. I don't know that our client has a, uh, they may have a, an idea in mind, but I don't know that, uh, it's real enough at this point without understanding, uh, what all would be part, assuming this is the plan that was approved and not the other idea that we're talking about. I, I, I don't know, uh, what the final approval will look like in terms of all of the costs. And I presume our client, who by the way is in Mexico now and regrettably was unable to attend tonight's planning commission meeting, um, uh, I, I don't know that, uh, they know. They may have some, uh, kind of thought or hope or idea in mind, but I really think it is premature at this point, not knowing, uh, what this, uh, plan would, would really look like. And certainly would have to discuss it with Mr. Burns, who's on the, uh, on the call with us. And, you know, there's been mention made of sewer connections and everything else. So I think there are a lot of things that need to be assessed yet to come up with even what I would call a ballpark figure that could fairly answer your question.
Sure. So I, I do agree with you. This is Jack Burns.
Sure. Um, and I'll go back from a question I raised with the developer last time when he gave me maybe a, a similar response as somebody that has worked with and currently does with developers for about 20 plus years. Um, I would think that you have a general idea. Um, no one goes into something, purchasing land, developing something without kind of a general range, whether that's $400,000 or $4 million. And I, Mr. Fromhold, I suspect I thought you mentioned earlier that you were discussing some of the finances, unless I misunderstood, um, your statement. You mentioned that you were discussing some of the finances beforehand and looking at those options and in keeping, uh, that current structure without having it, uh, be demolished to add four other ones.
Yeah, let, let me say, I, I, I don't know that I said that, uh, but, uh, there, right now, uh, the client owns this property, which is different than it is oftentimes when a, a developer will come in and, uh, have an idea of what they can pay for the property based on what they would hope to get out of it and so forth, and have gone through more of an analysis. I think from our client's standpoint, they, uh, reasonably would be looking at what the economic opportunity, uh, would be. Obviously, uh, in, uh, pursuing discussions on this other idea, they are considering the value, the benefit of, uh, let's say preserving the existing home or incorporating the existing home into the development. But, uh, at some point, there will be, uh, they'll have the ability to do a comparative analysis between, uh, their overall, uh, value, uh, of, uh, what they might do with this plan versus what they might do, uh, with an alternative and consider all the factors, uh, that would be involved and, and, uh, make a decision, uh, as to what they would, uh, like to do, choose to do. Uh, obviously economics is an important component of that decision.
Correct. Um, I, thank you. I'd like to move on. There's a question from Roy Eisen. What is the setback on Rockland Avenue? Uh, how is it that there are three stories allowed also on Rockland Avenue? Um, according to the, uh, plans I just peeked at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Young, the setback of the facade, uh, not the porch, but the front facade of the, the proposed houses on Rockland Avenue is 29 feet from the curb. We measure the setbacks in this area from the curb. And that is a setback, uh, as we were discussing earlier, uh, there's a chart in the zoning code which, uh, which states what the setback, uh, for, uh, houses on each block should be, uh, at a minimum. So it's 29 feet. In terms of three stories, um, pretty much throughout Narberth, uh, we allow three story buildings. There are a few exceptions to that. Um, along Windsor Avenue for a few blocks, we allow four story buildings as a conditional use, uh, with certain requirements tied to that. And, uh, in much of the downtown, we, out rest of the downtown, we currently only allow, uh, two story buildings. And so, but for the most part in the borough, it's, uh, three stories and 35, 36 feet? 35, 36 feet, 35 feet. That's just a standard, standard height that we allow everywhere. Now, Mr. Eisen, uh, I see you made a comment, um, about the kind of general intensity of development. Would you like to make a comment in, in person? Or should I just read what you said? You're welcome to make a comment right now if you'd like. Okay, I don't hear you. Uh, so I'll just say for the audience, uh, the comment you wrote is that as a resident of Narberth and the possibility that this plan sets a precedent, I find this plan overdeveloping. Okay, so I see, um, uh, that Robin Berenholz, uh, would like to comment. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I want to start by saying I completely share Alexandra Ting's and also David Verdell's, um, comments. Um, just really hoping that there's very serious consideration to keeping the existing home. But, uh, one of my big concerns is that on both Marion Avenue and Rockland Avenue, the houses are very modest. The houses on The houses on either side of this planned development are the largest houses there are. And most of the houses are small singles and many, many small twins. And that's even more true on Rockland Ave, well, about equally true, I'd say, on Rockland Avenue. And it makes the scale of these homes, even with this plan, even with the cutouts, really massively out of scale. So it's not only whether the architectural style is going to fit in, but I am very concerned that it's gonna look like a wall on this street and on Rockland Avenue. And I hope that that's really considered. I'm also really surprised, looking at the plans, at how little green space there is. I think it's 15 feet behind each set of twins. And green space is, there's very little green space in Narberth. And what we have is primarily on our properties, as we discussed at the last planning commission meeting. And Indian Creek is right down the street. And the amount of runoff after removing most permeable surfaces is really, really a big concern to me. But yeah, so I'd like to know if those things are being considered and if the scale in particular is being considered.
For that, I think Ms. Berenholtz, your comment will be answered in the planning commission discussion, if you wouldn't mind waiting for that. I'd like to ask if there's any other public comment, either online or in the audience here. Would you like to make a comment? I don't see any other public comment on this. No one has indicated in the chat, so what I'd like to do is close public comment on this. Pardon me? Alex, sorry, I didn't see you. It's best if you would like to comment, put something in the chat, because not all of us can see you on the screen. And we do not want to overlook anybody. Alex, one last comment, please.
Okay. Okay. I have a question for the architect. Have you considered the possibility of making two twins just along Rockland and not any other, and leaving the existing home and creating, just leaving the green space next to it? And maybe configuring the twins so that they can fit into the space that's left from the, you know, behind the house and then a little bit more.
Yeah, sure, sure. Sorry, this is Jack Burns again, yes.
Because it just seems to me that the house that exists with all that green space next to it, it's really valuable green space and the house is beautiful. I can imagine that going for definitely more than a million dollars. I mean, maybe one and a half million. I don't really know exactly, but then you have three homes.
Unfortunately, not privy to those conversations, yeah, for the value of the home. We've looked at several different schemes. There were a couple preliminary schemes that had three units total, including the other house. But we've been moving towards the four-unit schemes more lately. But we've looked at a number of different options, yes. And when you were describing that scheme, I think I was a little unsure what you were, what you meant by that. Was it an addition onto the existing home? Was it two twins along Rockland? Was it?
No, I was thinking of having, two twins, twins on Rockland, two twins. And then leaving green space beside the existing home facing Marion Avenue.
Oh, gotcha.
You have three homes total.
It doesn't subdivide that way according to any of the zoning codes or any of the space. The lot's too small to operate in that way. It can't be subdivided in that way.
And is there a possibility that the two twins could be different shapes but look similar from the street? In other words, one could be shallower, the other could be deeper, but from the street they look similar?
That would be a possibility, but the lot needed to be created for the smaller of the two twins would never be allowed in. It's too small of a lot. It's not a viable zoning acceptable lot. Yeah, there's really only so many ways to segment up this lot. Front, back on the one side in the green space and then maintaining the other home is kind of the only way to do it in three slices. Other than that, it's four.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your question, but I do want to close public comment now. I don't see any other members of the public. So I'd like to ask, the planning commission discussion right now, we have before us this application, we've heard public comments, the letters of review, a couple initial thoughts from you. I'd like to get some direction from planning commissioners about how you feel about the application and how you think we should proceed with it. Anyone care to start? Jim or Dave? Jim Spear has indicated he'd like to speak, so we'll start with you.
Sure. Okay, so I guess my thought about the scale of the buildings, so what was supposed to, the intent of the facade build-out was supposed to assist with maintaining the scale of the buildings on a block. And this plan has swished their entire facade behind two porches. So as far as I can tell, we will, the two facades not be seen from the street. And, I mean, there's no other way around it. You know, this plan is getting around the intent of the facade, facade build-out. And I think when I asked the VergeNet's question earlier tonight, I think someone said that they were considering some dormers or some bay windows on the second and third floor that would, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware, at least as far as I'm concerned, that any projection beyond that dotted line is going to be considered part of the facade. And would, and you know, the facade total would have to go up from there. So that's my concern, is that this plan is getting around the amassing issue by hiding all of its, technically, all of its facade behind two porches. And they're not visible. And the impression we're getting from the building is all wall that's set back more than six feet behind the facade.
Other comments from other planning commissioners? Now, Jim, did you want to, Cornwell, did you want to speak then?
Yeah, I really have to withhold comment until I see some architecture. I agree with what Jim Spear just said. The broad expanse facing Marion Avenue has the potential to be just off, if not handled sensitively. And the dimensions that we are looking at in these drawings make the hair stand up on the back of my neck in that regard. So I really don't have anything more to say about the way that the buildings present themselves to the street. I will comment that this design concept packs the site, as someone else, one of the, someone else mentioned earlier in the evening, to such an extent that there's virtually no amenity left on the ground level. The entire, the footprints max out the available ground area in service of, I think, in service of the sales price of the units, leaving precious little ground floor area, ground plane area for any sort of amenities. As a parent and a grandparent, I'm aware that the available land for a swing set and a sandbox and a picnic table is essential for civil life. And I don't see that happening on this site plan yet. I'm hopeful to see it in the future as it develops. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, I saw you on Zoom that you wanted to speak, and here you are. Go ahead, Adam.
Just a couple items, like one is that, to stay technical, terms that if there's windows in a dormer or shed dormer in the second floor or the third floor, those count through the facade area, is that correct?
Any vertical plane within six feet of the front setback, whether it's got a window or whether it's a wall, counts towards the facade area. So anything like a dormer, bay window would have to be behind that six feet or else it would count towards the facade.
I agree with the other commission members that the organization of the facade, I just think it's challenging to see how it will work being so applied and then not having anything for the second or third floor to face the street with. And that, I also agree with Jim about the, I think also with, I sense where they're trying to position the property based on the size of the house, that most people are going to want a patio as part of the standard for the house. And so, that may actually be something I, maybe the zoning needs to think through about, like amenity as part of subdivision, as part of zoning for, you know, outdoor amenity. So I mean, of course, definitely they don't count as indoor/outdoor space, but I think that the remaining yards are, there's not anything left on the property. I agree with the comment about it.
Any other planning commission comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a brief comment that I, I'm reluctant to make any observations about this scheme that could be construed as encouraging to develop it more. I, you know, I believe, I agree with the previous comments that I think this is a way-over-development of the site and that there's a scheme that, I'm confident that there's a scheme that preserves the house and brings a decent return to the owners without having to have this kind of level of development. So I look forward to getting back to a discussion that goes in that direction. That's my comment.
Jennifer, someone, turn yourself, okay. Jennifer, introduce yourself.
Yes, Jennifer, Diane C. here, and I just want to follow suit with the others on the planning commission. It looks to me, as a new member, it looks almost like the regulations are framing the architecture, almost like an inverse footprint of, you know, setbacks and, those are guidelines, that's not architecture. I think along, you know, Jim said he needs to see architecture, I agree with him. I think maybe if the, if this could become more volumetric, if we could see more amassing and less outlining, architecture is volumetric. We need to see space, not what looks like marginal, you know, frameworks of a code. So what's really looking forward to seeing further development of architecture in that regard.
Heidi, you are.
I mean, I. This thing ticked me off.
Okay. So anyway, I agree with the other planning commissioners. It's a way-over-developed plan and that I sincerely hope the applicant will consider working with the planning commission on a plan that keeps the existing house, I do think the development potential is there to make an incredible profit on the site by packing it out less. And I just think this is really kind of an egregious and opportunistic drawing that we're looking at right now. And I really don't want to see it developed any further. I don't think there's a solution that will work within the context of the street. Even if you look at the twins around it, on either side of it, behind and lower in Marion, they are probably at least half the size. So they, it just doesn't fit in with comprehensive plan and the intention of the borough to maintain an integrity of development.
So I'd like to ask, several of the members of the planning commission suggested that, you know, it's hard for you really to evaluate this without seeing the three-dimensional study. It is a unfortunate circumstance of our subdivision and land development ordinance. And those of you who are updating it, take note, that we don't actually require the three-dimensional, or not even demonstrating the conformance with facade requirement, which is the three-dimensional, the vertical, until the preliminary plan phase. So in that sense, the applicant's not required to provide that now, and that's why we're not seeing it now. Some of you have said you don't think this plan can actually be developed to your satisfaction, no matter how hard they work on it, whether they bring the volumetric drawings or not. So I'm wondering right now, without actually having a resolution, is anyone here inclined to vote for this tonight, to vote to approve it? And voting to approve it would simply mean you're asking them to come back with a preliminary plan that shows you these things you're asking for? Or do you feel not ready to vote to approve it because of the reasons that you have stated? I think our choice is to approve it and ask the applicant to come back and address these concerns and so that they can use more resources. The other option is to simply not approve it. I'm not sure what, except for the grounds and subdivision and land development ordinance, I'm not sure what guidance our codes give to that. Or to simply say, we're not comfortable voting on this now and to state concerns and ask if the applicant would further develop this before we give a tentative approval. I don't feel a great deal of enthusiasm for this project among anybody here, the planning commission or the community. So I guess I need to see where, how you're all feeling about this. Or to approve, advance, and hope it can be refined, ask them to come back with something different now, or simply, simply make a recommendation that this should not be approved? I guess I'm curious where folks stand or what I'm looking for, suggest about how we might frame our next. Jim or Dave here?
Well, I'll speak. I'm certainly not inclined to vote for this as it's currently drawn. And I am hopeful that we will see a better plan next time we see it. But it would be, I would be untrue to my own inclinations to vote for it tonight.
Mr. Fromhold, I'd like to speak, but I would like to give the other planning commissioners an opportunity to at least air your opinion, so.
Yeah, I agree, this is Heidi, I agree. I would not vote for this plan.
Jim?
Yeah, given the questions I have about the facade, I'm really, I'm worried there's Yeah, given the questions I have about the facade, I'm really, I'm worried there's going to be a controversy over which is facade, you know, the apparent facade is going to be the second or third floor. But the actual facade is behind the porch, and it seems, it just seems like it's, it's being set up that way just to get around the rules and to, to sort of thwart the intended provision of massing of the building on the street. So this doesn't seem right with the facade. I would not be inclined to vote in favor of this tonight. I would not.
Okay. Any other comments, Dave?
I, I agree with the previous comments. I would not support this plan at this time.
I agree. I mean, I think.
Anything to add, Adam?
I just, I, I know we aren't at the stage of looking at three dimensions, but I'm having trouble visualizing a three story house without the second or third floor having a sun. Like mathematically, it seems impossible.
So, I mean, I, I don't, you know, I agree that it's over developing the person. So I would, I would.
So, Mr. Framholt, I'll, I'll ask you to make a comment, but I'll preface it by saying, I think what you're hearing tonight is an acknowledgement that technically this proposal meets the letter of the code, but particularly given that language and the style though, nobody here who has spoken finds that it meets the spirit of the code. And that while it may, you know, meet the requirements of building coverage and frontages and so forth, I think the sense you're hearing is that these are not really buildings that have, that convey the kind of value and quality of life that people associate with, with being in their birth, which is, you know, essentially functional yard and manory. And that, you know, there's not a lot of appreciation, while we do acknowledge that that it, what you're trying to do with facade does meet the code requirement, not a lot of appreciation for how you're approaching it. So with that said, I'm not sure whether to call for votes tonight or not, but I'm kind of interested in hearing your feelings and reaction, your reactions to that.
Yeah, and I, I do this with Mr. Burns and Mr. Yan on the call with me without our clients, and I'm trying to effectuate what would be their intent were they here on the call. And I think what makes sense in light of all the comments that we've heard, and there have been a number, but they've fallen into a few categories, would be to come back to you with additional information, with clarification on the plan. We've discussed, you know, the, whether these need to be twins at the point, at the frontage line, that, that's an issue. There has been concern raised with respect to the sufficiency of outdoor space, which I'd like to be able to explore further with our client, Mr. Yan and Mr. Burns. And then there have been questions raised concerning the facade that perhaps we can provide some further information or clarification at this point, whether or not it's technically required by the code at this stage. It's a, a point of great interest to the planning commission. I was going to say some of the members, but I'm sure it, it's all of the members of the planning commission that are interested in what the facade looks like. So that being the case, you know, no, we're not seeking any action from you or vote from you tonight, but we would like to, as we have in the past on this and other developments, come back and attempt our best to respond to what we've heard tonight. And at the same time, recognizing that we have, you know, I don't want to make light of those other discussions that we have that are ongoing that relate to this property but not to this plan.
Mr. Framholt, your, your response is greatly appreciated. We appreciate very much your going back and looking at those questions that folks have raised tonight. And, you know, if there's anything further we can do to convey this to you, we will. We do also appreciate the other track of conversation we're having and are hopeful that we can continue in that way productively.
Thank you. And I, I apologize, I don't know why I can't get my picture up on the screen, so. But I haven't, I, I assume you don't see me, I don't see me here.
Well, no one's gonna, no one's gonna say anything.
All right. I, I need a haircut, and that's why I, no, kidding.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate very much your, your, you're taking another look at this and bringing us more information and looking at some of the massing and scale issues that folks have raised. We do really appreciate that, and I, I hope we can, would you like to come back in August, according to the schedule that we still have, which would still keep you within the original 90 day schedule?
Yeah, I, I think that would, that would be fine and appreciated.
Sorry, this is Jack Burns again. We'll work towards that. We will do the best we can to convey something to the board. It's just not something that we've done a great deal of presentation work on this point. We have several, several very viable concepts in place, but nothing has been created to the point where I'm comfortable presenting it to the board yet. So we will have something for you next time.
Okay. We, we do appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to the, we'll take, I hope we can still get a little time to look at some of the zoning issues, because that is actually pertinent to this conversation about how we manage. So the second item on our agenda is to talk about some potential ways to amend the zoning code to facilitate infill housing primarily on large lots with historic homes that could potentially be subdivided. We're looking at this primarily because we've seen a couple of cases over the last year or so where property owners have had to come in for relief. 230 Dudley is one that's on our schedule right now to adjust a lot line to allow for a developable lot. We had an issue on Chestnut where in order to create a developable lot, the, the property owner was proposing to slice a bay window off a house, and we were able to figure out a way around that. But I think what we're interested in doing, in anticipating if the historic district ordinance is approved, that we may have more situations where people would like to try to figure out how to make productive use of their, of their lots. So we would, we've begun a conversation about what kinds of modifications we might make to the code to accommodate that. There are two, I guess there's three broad topics. One is changing the, the potential for changing the requirements for detached houses and twin houses to provide a little more flexibility for how those might be infilled. And what I'm going to do is I have a couple of sheets that describe that that I'm going to pass around, and I'm going to call it up on my screen so that people who are watching on Zoom can see that. And then the second topic is a more cumbersome idea, which is to allow for multiple, multiple primary structures on a lot, which would eliminate the need for subdivision and allow more flex, flexibility for site planning. And then the third topic, I'm not sure we'll get to these all, is allowing for accessory dwellings, which council has asked us to look at. The idea, so we'll start with the idea of requirements for twin houses and detached houses, and then we'll move on to the conditional use and then on, depending on people's time and energy to accessory houses. The, the idea about how we might accommodate twin houses and single family houses more flexibly, I think Heidi is the kind of primary person who came up with that idea, so I might ask, if you wouldn't mind describing that, and I will call my notes up on the screen. And then if we get to the next topic, I'll, I'll talk about that. But I just, the last thing I'd like to say to preface this is, well, I think you should probably preface the context as well as to why this idea is being discussed and how you assessed it and came up with this idea. And the last thing I'll say is what we're looking for tonight in the planning commission is policy guidance. I think this is a good idea, I don't think this is a good idea, did you consider this? Did you consider that? So that some of us can kind of go back and look at it more carefully and then bring you more specific line work. So if you're new to the commission, that's how I like to work. I like to try to build a consensus around our policy approaches and then fine tune the actual language as we go down the pipe. So tonight, we're just looking for policy direction. Good idea, bad idea, what should we be looking for? Are there red lines? Are you, et cetera? So Heidi, I'll pull the, the sheet up so everyone can see it, but why don't you go ahead and describe?
Okay. So I've always questioned the minimum lot size in 3B and 3C. Right now, it's calling for 6,000 square feet per house. And a large part of both of those districts includes property that are much smaller than that. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do believe I've shared those in the past. And I would like to look at reducing the minimum lot size in those areas. I think that one question would arise if we allow smaller lots is whether or not this should apply to all development, because specifically if you look at this Marion Avenue project, if we can just look at that for a second, obviously, if we reduce lot size, it doesn't save the house. So I would wonder whether in fact this could apply lots with an existing house on it. So that would be another question that we should ponder. But I was looking at rather than 6,000 square foot lot, something more in the range of 3,500 to 3,000 square foot lot. And what this would do is keep setbacks the same as they are for a 6,000 square foot lot, and therefore the houses would be smaller, and the build outs and et cetera would all be, could probably be the change, but that would encourage smaller homes. And it would, if we, if we had a caveat where you, this was for subdividing lots, it would encourage.
Can I add a few comments?
Mm-hmm.
To clarify, as Heidi and I have discussed this, and we also talked with Jim Cornwell, one of the questions would be what zoning districts would this apply to, which is another question. From my own personal perspective, it's easier to evaluate this in 3B and 3C, but 3A is a little more challenging because of the variety of lot sizes, so that is a point of discussion. As a clarification, the current minimum lot size in 3A is 10,000 square feet for a new house, 6,000 square feet in 3B, and 4,000 square feet in 3C. So Heidi's proposal for 3,000 and 3,500 would be lower than what's required in 3B and 3C No other, as we have discussed, that no other metrics would change, just, just the minimum lot size. Heidi, is it stealing thunder to say you also suggested this could apply to twin houses as well?
I think it could. I think that if that would be something we should look at, because I didn't specifically look at the current lot size of twins.
Right.
But it could be very much.
So the idea is in order to facilitate infill housing, particularly for historic houses where historic district ordinance passes, people will not be able to demolish them, is there a way to use lots differently? An elegant and simple way to do that would be to reduce the minimum lot size, no other, no other factors. And Heidi said it would result in smaller houses, because all the other metrics would be in place and scrunch the house down. It would allow for more efficient use of lots from a develop, I mean, you would see higher lot coverage houses, like the ones we saw tonight, you'd see more houses like that, because they would, they would come closer, the way our lot coverages, our, our building coverages work. You get a lot of credit for the first so many square foot year lot, and then a little credit for bigger lots, and so smaller lots would get lots of credit. But if on balance, you would have, you would have older houses, historic houses, presumably in a larger lot, where the open space would be preserved potentially. So that's the idea. And I guess what we're looking for is that, good idea, bad idea, just so it would just be worth looking into more. Jim, you've been in these conversations, do you have anything to add?
I think it's a complicated subject, and it, but I do think it's worth looking into. I, I don't think we're going to solve all the, all the nooks and crannies of the thing in one session this evening, but I see, I think it has the potential, and it is worthy of further study.
What are the complications that you think ought to be considered?
I don't think they've revealed themselves yet. I mean, it's, it's, it is potentially very upsetting to the, to the standards that currently exist, and therein might lie some serious problems. I don't know yet.
Yeah, I, I think similar to some exercises we've done in the past, we've got to take some sites and game them out using these, these alternatives, you know, putting on our best developer hats or our worst developer hats, and seeing what, what pops out. And hopefully then, if there are unintended consequences to this, they become more evident. But I think in my experience, they only become evident when you put pencil to paper and really try to work out development schemes.
Which we have done successfully in the past.
Are there comments from any other planning commissioners about this, this idea? Things that we should be considering, good, is it a good idea or a bad idea to begin with?
Does this relate to the discussion of accessory dwelling units, or is that a different topic?
That's a different topic.
Okay. One other question, I, I heard a hint that we were possibly considering another housing type, a small house housing type, is that, is that on the table?
Heidi, you want to, you want to respond?
Yeah, I thought that it was kind of, it would happen automatically if you reduced the lot size, the house size was smaller, and it's not really the type that you just desire. I think, you know, the discussion that you just called a cottage.
What about the idea of clustering the small houses together?
Oh, well, that's a really good question. That's another actual process. That would depend on lot size. So Bayonne Avenue project, if you're trying to retain the existing, and I think with 3,000 square foot lot, you clearly have to develop a cluster of homes around it. I think, you know, we still want to have some difference between the properties, between your homes, front yards, backyards, like things that, it's kind of a matter of difference in lot size. I mean, access to the site would make a difference, and graduate, your heart and your, etc. That could be developed as a, as a.
So Jim, the other, another, one of the topics that I said was sort of allowing multiple primary dwell. multiple primary buildings on a lot, that would be a possibility of allowing smaller clusters of houses.
On a single lot, though?
A single lot, yeah.
So how does that relate to carving it up into 3,500 square foot lot?
It's just a different idea.
Different idea, okay.
Just because of more of an HOA than an individual unit.
Yeah, right.
But it would be something we could talk about next. One thing I'll say, if you just count detached houses, single-family houses, roughly, there are about 1,080 listed in our database, and half of them, more than half of them, have lots of less than 6,000 square feet. And we would probably, of that 540, we would capture about 75% to 80% into becoming conforming again, is what Heidi thinks. So essentially, we have a code, I mean, this is rough, because I need to look at the different zoning districts and stuff, but we have a code that a substantial portion of our houses are non-conforming, it's the size of the lot. And if nothing else, we'd bring tens of percent, 10, 20, 30% of our houses back into conformity, if not more.
Adam, I tend to agree with the idea that for zoning, like the existing town should conform, and I think it's a red flag, and I don't know. But with that said, I also agree with the comments that, like, understanding, if you just change these mathematical numbers, what does that actually do to the development process? Like, how would that affect specific projects?
Because you can see, you know, like with the last project, there's, you know, even with all, even with a pretty good code, there's, people try sometimes, maybe taking it as a direction that's not really what the spirit of it is, or what the goal is. And so I think far as what would be helpful would be maybe to, from a policy perspective, is articulate the goal more clearly. So one goal would be maybe to have existing development conforming to the zoning. But if there's a broader goal related to affordability, or some other type of goal, maybe that needs to be effectively addressed, and then that would help to judge whether the actual ordinance is moving in that direction.
Yeah, and I guess, sort of piggybacking on, I think, one of the first questions that changed mine, really struck this project, is, is the genesis of this proposal based on affordability, debate sensitivity, is it based on demand? What is the, what prompted this?
The first thing that prompted it was the non-conformity of existing home styles.
Okay.
That's the first thing. I have to say that most recently, it's the 146 Marion Avenue project, how could we subdivide that property within the restrictions that you've done?
I would, I would... Do you agree enough to demising the property to get a better lotting plan?
Right, right, okay. Because right now, with the minimum lot size, that's why you're seeing 20, because they only require 300 square feet.
I would further say that in terms of goals, it's not one project, it's several projects.
Well, no, definitely.
Where we've had to review these things. And I think it becomes more urgent, and, you know, I think one of the notes I have on my notes is that maybe this should only apply in the historic district, that is, say, for a house that is historic and has a large lot, that if the house isn't, that's another consideration to make. But I think that's another consideration, is if we are telling people they cannot demolish their house, but they have a large lot, this becomes a way to ensure there's an option, as is an accessory dwelling unit, there's options for people to, because it's been mentioned by others that actually, that's the tradition of Norbert's, people bought larger lots and subdivided them and built other houses, it's time to honor. It's not an unusual process in terms of Norbert's. Affordability is always something we talk about. I don't think we can create a causal relationship between houses and lot sizes and affordability, but I think we tend to think if a house is smaller, it will cost less. But I don't know that we can, I think, I always say that the meta-issues around housing affordability, like interest rates and things like that, are far more powerful than what we can do with zoning, but I'll think being a small house probably costs less.
Because big house costs less.
Big house costs less, and I think it's not about, the way I think about it is not affordability, but this is a way to provide, since we have this 6,000 square foot lot, we don't really have a way for people to build small houses. And this is, this is a way to provide more options for diverse housing to be built, with the hope that in the long run, that will help affordability out.
But I agree with this notion that maybe the 6,000 square feet, for example, like it's too much, right? If it doesn't conform to what the existing lots are, if they are, you're not being able to divide or subdivide lots in a logical way. But with the other goal, you know, maybe there may be a more powerful tool than subdivision, right? So maybe to your point about connoisseurship of the property and getting multiple structures that way. So if we look at the last project, for example, it remained one lot, but the issue were how many dwellings did we put onto that lot without, without making different parcels? I mean, if you have some more powerful tools ultimately, I don't know, maybe not, but does that make sense?
It makes sense, and actually, if you want, I can call up the notes I added on that. It's a tool that could allow for more flexibility, but it's a lot harder to manage, because it really requires, whereas if you simply just change the minimum lot size, or a simple metric like that, in theory, you still have a very simple approval process. Whereas, I think that this idea of allowing for multiple principal buildings on a lot would probably require very complicated and potentially a conditional use review. We, you know, before the Form Based Code was passed, Norbert did allow for multiple, multiple buildings on a lot. That's how, for example, we got the Price Crossing, how we got the church renovations done, because they just filled in a few more houses, they didn't have to subdivide. From that point of view, it was really, was really valuable to have that. And when the Form Based Code was passed, that was eliminated. We have actually created a conditional use process that would allow for multiple principal buildings in the 5A district. So, and the idea there is, in most of the 5A district, we have, in much of the 5A district, we have rules that really constrain the maximum dimensions of the building, so we don't get big mega buildings. But in order to, if people wanted to redevelop any sites, they could still have smaller buildings and bigger buildings. And I think one of the goals there is to provide options for people to save smaller buildings, and have more flexibility about how they do it. In the 5A district, we have that, and we do have some metrics for how that works, but it's a conditional use process. So in a way, Adam, I think both tools are viable. So here, here the suggestion is for larger lots in the 3A and 3B, because I think 3A just requires a lot more analysis. More than one principal building could be in a lot. Rather than having dimensions of lot, you just have to have so many square feet on the lots of each building you want to put there. So like, if you have a 15,000 square foot lot, you wouldn't literally subdivide it with lines, but you would just say, 15,000 square feet, oh, that allows me to do two single families, two twins, or whatever, right? It all ends up to 15,000. But you'd have a lot more flexibility about where to put them on the lot. And the lot area maximum, we'd have to think about what the maximum building coverage would be allowed, whether that, you know, would be the same as now, or whether there'd be, one of the goals of this is to allow for historic houses to remain, if there'd be some incentive that allowed more lot coverage. The other issues, like the amount of frontage, there's suggestions that, in here, that whatever the frontage is required for the original lot, you'd have to have that many square feet, but you could break it up into different buildings or some sort of, we have tools like that in the country already in other places, and this is sort of an attempt to put them on large lots. So I think, I think, Adam, it's not necessarily an alternative, maybe a parallel tool, but it's a lot more, when you read it, you'll realize, it's a lot more challenging to manage and figure out what are the kind of transverses you want to turn around with. We don't have a plan due to development in Norbert's, because we don't, and so this might be, this might be something similar to that, we just don't have experience in But it's another, another question. Those are the notes we have.
I have to start by one thing, I know this is all in a preliminary NTS piece, but if there's a, in a historic district that has a large lot, that they would be allowed to subdivide off a smaller parcel, like a 3,000 square foot parcel, whereas another home with a similar sized lot would not be able to make that same subdivision, so it would be a regulation on subdivision that would vary, whether you could come in for a subdivision based on whether the whole was, was that the nature of the property or not.
It would be like creating a zoning district that is an overlay district that is contiguous with the historic district, and in that district, certain zoning will apply in that overlay. Heidi?
Sounds good. Just to clarify, what are your...
That would be the idea, or maybe, maybe it applies everywhere, I don't know, but that would be a possibility.
Does that run into county's problems about allowing a lot line drawing in certain circumstances and other things?
No, I mean, I think you just have to be careful, and this is really a question more for your solicitors than for any county issues. But I think it could be done, that's my preliminary guess, to your preliminary idea, is that it would be okay. You have to write, if you're going to have a different rule for someone with, you know, the same parcel potentially in the same zoning district, then you have to be really clear about it. But I think it's possible.
I think an overlay is what you, technically, what you'd be doing.
Yeah, I think that likely would be something.
So I guess the guidance here is, we have two ideas, they're not exclusive of each other, and one is to study how we might adjust minimum lot sizes for twins and detached houses to provide more flexibility for anything. That's one idea, and we sort of have ideas on what those metrics might be. And I think the recommendation we got from Jim earlier and others is, that would really need to be tested against a few sites, to see how that would work. And then the second idea, parallel, not alternative, would be to create a more flexible site planning process for larger lots that doesn't require subdivision, that has some metrics that control form, scale, and so forth, which is sort of sketched out here. And I guess the first question is, does anyone have any objections to looking at those further? And then the second is, aside from gaming out the idea of smaller lots, are there any kind of issues you see that we should be thinking about or looking at and studying as we try and look at this further?
I wonder if you're going to allow smaller lots, like being carved up from larger lots, could you allow, I'm thinking this might be a good thing, possibly, could you allow an interior lot? Like, could you allow, you know, sort of stacking lots away from the street, as long as they were accessible from a drive, or something like that? Yeah, and thereby not have a, yeah, flag lot, or, you know, or a driveway easement or something like that, that didn't have any street frontage. Is that a possibility?
Why are you thinking about that?
Oh, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking about the...
Is that like something like you think, oh, here's a lot where that might be an instrument, or are you just sort of...
Yeah, I'm thinking about several, several large properties in the boroughs that have a large side lot that could, you know, could possibly carve lots into the depth of the lot rather than along the width of the street, particularly through law.
Yeah. Well, I hadn't thought about that, that I think I thought about in terms of this idea of just allowing multiple primary buildings on a lot. So if there was a route to subdividing them, that's something I thought about, so.
So is there any downside to multiple buildings on a lot? The way it's organized and the way it's managed is, I assume, by a group. I mean, it is like a homeowners association or something that would manage that lot. Is there any downside to that? I mean, has the church property and the Price Crossing, Price Crossing is that one?
Mm-hmm.
Is it an association process?
I can't say. I can't say. I mean, the only, the first downside that comes to mind, like I said, is the process of writing a code that would allow people to understand what they could do is kind of complicated. Like, what are the bottom lines we would have, right?
Well, to get to your point, I'm sorry to raise my hand, but, you know, the PUD, for example, planning unit of development, might be an optional task, but it's not a by rights process, but, you know, it's more of a, because it isn't maybe as easy to put completely objective, you know...
Oh, it would have to be, it would have to be a conditional process. But I still think there needs to be something.
No, of course, of course, but, you know, I've, what I'm getting at is, you know, inherently, you can't maybe design it from the book, right?
Right.
And I think, I don't know the answer to whether there's a downside to an HOA approach, for example, but rhetorically, you could ask the question, is there a downside to single lot ownership? I mean, maybe there's a downside to that too, right? Some people don't really take care of their lots, you know, so maybe with an HOA, there needs to be more accountability. I don't know. But I think, I actually think that's this notion of how you can get additional housing that is contact sensitive and environmentally sensitive, and that's the policy goal, and economically verminetic, and the rest of the details that are trying to accomplish that.
Okay, I'm going to quickly call up our notes on accessory dwelling units, and then we'll call it a night, since it's late, and see if there's any guidance we can get on that. So we've also, Heidi and Jim and I have talked a bit about an accessory dwelling unit. How might we create, right now, we don't allow residential uses. So we allow for primary dwell, primary buildings and accessory buildings on lots. You can have more than one building on a lot. Primary building is what's allowed to the zoning land uses. Accessory buildings allow for uses that are customarily related to the primary use, except we explicitly say you cannot have a resident in an accessory building. So that's how things stand there. We've looked at this several times as a planning commission, and we haven't really come to a consensus about how to do it, but the Borough Council explicitly asked us to consider this again. So as we are asked to advise Borough Council, it makes sense to give them advice. So we have looked at this and come up with some ideas for consideration. The first point is that we would like, in the past, there've been a lot of concerns about whether an accessory dwelling unit would meet fire and safety codes, or building codes, or things like that. And we would sort of just like to say, we have to make a base assumption, zoning codes are zoning codes, the fire codes are fire codes, the building codes are building codes, everyone's got to meet all codes. So even if something works from a zoning point of view, if they can't meet the fire code, and they can't meet the building code, they won't get a permit to do it. And so let's just isolate... let's just isolate the zoning issue. So that's, that's number one, that's been a big point of conversation in the past. The second, so then the second issue is, is how does, since we have, we have a provision for accessory buildings in the code now, what, would it simply be a solution to say, well, you can have created an accessory building like, like you can now, and you can just make it residential, and just remove that, that barrier, otherwise leave the rules to sit. And where that would leave you is essentially with, one, the only rules that govern accessory buildings right now are side setbacks and rear setbacks, I think it's three feet is the setback from a rear side problem, there's no other rule about accessory building. An aggregate accessory building, and the primary building, you know, they can't exceed the building coverage, they can't exceed the impervious, but there's no specific rule about accessory buildings. So that would be the simplest thing to do, just like turn the switch on, and say, if you want to build a new accessory building, a residential, you can do it. Then the question is, one question that comes from that is, do we place any further zoning restrictions on a residential unit? Because a residential unit might require more thinking than a garage, or a shed, or a workshop. And so there are some ideas here about what the, you know, do we require extra lot size if you have an accessory unit? Or do we have a maximum or minimum, do we have a maximum size of what an accessory unit might be? And do we put a limit on how big that could be? Those are questions that we think are worth considering. Should there be a maximum height? We feel, you know, probably two stories is okay. Should there be a parking requirement for an accessory dwelling unit? Probably yes. If we have an accessory unit, we don't have to park.
Yes, there's no discussion.
What's that?
Yes, there's no discussion, but.
No, we didn't, we debated a lot, and I don't agree with that, but I agree that.
I mean, in this meeting, we just said, you know, it's been decided, it's what, you're saying, like you implied that a decision wouldn't make a difference.
No, 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 there's no decisions, because we're just presenting ideas that we had in the conversation. I think, I think it's a, a policy issue. We felt that's pretty reasonable to ask for parking, but we're trying to articulate the questions throughout the discussion. So I think, I think what we'd like to find out is, and then, and a whole nother branch, I'm sorry, is what to do about existing buildings, existing garages or that people might, might want to convert. And I think there, it's a little trickier, because some of them are built closer to the property line, but if we were to allow, so we thought about it, we thought, well, if we were to allow an accessory building to have a residential unit in it, then somebody who had an existing building that didn't meet the setback requirements or other requirements could apply through variance to have that become a residential unit, that that land use change. And so would be, would we be willing to allow that, you know, for that to be the process that people go through? Should it be easier, should it be harder? We don't know, but that's a point of conversation. So I think, I'm just kind of presenting a chain of logic. I think in general, we felt it's worth thinking about how to accomplish this. I think in general, we felt building off the existing rules for accessory dwelling is a good idea, there might need to be additional rules, we want to be careful about whether we are super encouraging or just allowing, you know, where do we want to fall on that spectrum, and so forth. So anyway, we bring these ideas to get.
Is that fair representation, Heidi?
So we bring that for feedback, for, for, for further work. And by the way, we can reorganize, as long as only three people are working on something, any three people can work on any of these topics. Adam, if you would love to write a PUD for us.
A lump of crap.
I don't know. I think your, your ABU discussion is like, it's a, I'm sort of curious how long you think it will take to, how much time it will take to produce the work and or the amendment? A lot of issues right here.
I don't know, that's why we're trying to get your feedback on where things might need to be solved.
I would suggest, I would be in favor of being more liberal about allowing existing structures to petition for, you know, habitability, whatever that is, if they're, you know, if it's too close to the setback line, for instance. And I'd even question if there's any appetite for reducing the setback line of any accessory building, because I find that, that the strip of land that that leaves in someone's yard on the other side of an accessory building is often dead space, it's impossible to maintain, it's, you know, I would like to see more things, more accessory structures built on the property line, particularly the rear property line. And I, you know, and I don't really have any objection to a habitable accessory dwelling unit existing on the property line. Perhaps maybe you wouldn't allow windows on that side or something like that, or you wouldn't allow entrance too close to a property line, but I, I wonder if that's possible to explore that along with it.
We debated this the last time, the, which wasn't that long ago, the conclusion was there needed to be sufficient dimension between the accessory building and the lot line for the access, for the owner to erect at least a step ladder to be able to do maintenance on their, on the accessory building. So that's where the three feet came from. If you have the thing at a zero lot line, you have to be, you probably have to be on your neighbor's property in order to get up to clean the gutters, and that doesn't seem like a practical idea.
Adam.
But I agree with Jim, that's the way it sounds, though. So I think that's part of being a neighbor, is you have to allow incidental access to maintain property.
Which Jim do you agree to the last, sorry.
Jim's here, I, I agree with Jim's here, like, let's, let's break it down, for example. Suppose that a lot has a garage that is too small to be a garage, right? I mean, and, but you, I mean, it might be purpose of reasonable to convert that into an accessory dwelling unit, perhaps even to add a second story or, you know, block to the roof to put the, and you, you may or may not have a window on the lot line, I mean, if there's already one there, I think the idea is that you, you don't have the right to put, expect a window on a lot line, because if, if your neighbor could still put something right up against it, right? And maybe, and maybe there's privacy issues as well, and so on. And maybe also, you shouldn't have the right to go two stories, or three stories up, you know, a lot line, you know, but have a setback above the first story or something like that. But I think it's the fact that we have all these garages built all over the place, and also, you know, it's also a town of twin houses and of row houses, and, I mean, my definition is zero lot line. I mean, I, I agree with that approach personally.
Okay, I'm interested in other reactions to other issues that we might need to, to consider.
I, you know, I guess, again, just really starting to get the wheels turning on this one, but, you know, are we always trying to make more there and use that as our best example? Or are we really, do we need to be thinking about sustainability, green space, if we take something away, we put it back somewhere else? What about Airbnb? People are popping up their car rentals in, whatever, you know, that Landfair area, I know people who are, you know, they're going crazy with Airbnbs in their backyard, and, I mean, how much of, are we trying to make this a neighborly, I don't want a window on my property line type of policy versus a, what is the economic paradigm for an accessory dwelling unit? Are we looking at adaptive reuse? Are we saying this is the best way to reuse this beautiful stone would have been a workshop? And now we want to make it into a studio, or an in-lug suite, or a, or a garage, or, you know, whatever? I mean, how many, what is the, what's the orientation to the, you know, placing of a rule?
That's cool.
To say, this is what it has to be, and nobody's allowed to look outside of it? Or, you know what I'm saying?
No, those are all really solid.
I would like.
And that's where, I mean, touch, just not to, just finish, you know, you had mentioned something about coming up with an idea about a form, like what was the new zone form theme, and that is like such a loaded question, I think, in terms of, are we looking, which direction are we looking in? Is it, we're looking at existing, or we're looking at new paradigms for, for so?
I think as a matter of fact, Kelly, we have to look at both. I mean, they're existing, as Jim and Adam have been saying, there, there are already existing buildings there that could be repurposed. There are also, I, I did want to say one more thing, though, Heidi. I don't think it's, I don't think bringing up the notion of Airbnbs in this context is, is a key issue. Airbnbs are a land use. Rental of, of properties for short-term rentals is regulated in the zoning codes as different kind of land use. It's also regulated by our business code. One could easily do the same thing with a house, they could accessory dwelling unit, and so I think it's like, it's a broader issue of how the borough goes about defining that activity and enforcing that activity, and so, same thing, I'll just say, also comes up with, like, what if they rent it to college students? Well, like, what if I rent my house to college students? So I don't, I don't think those are the issues that, that are the most important ones to be, to be talking about. In fact, well, anyway, so Heidi, what were you going to?
No, I was just going to ask, why did you tag the one question with five?
Because just a number of things about it, like the, I think that, again, I think we should regulate lightly if it's the overarching issue. I think that if this is about affordability and senior citizens and so on, a lot of those people may not even have a car, and the constant need to provide parking is expensive, it takes up a lot of land, and, you know, may run counter to all the other goals of open space and affordability. And I also don't think it's perfectly fair, the regulatory standpoint, the way it works, because people have garages, you know, and so it's the whole notion that garages and off-street parking are, are the solution, it's oversimplifying the issue personally. That's what I think.
Are there other thoughts on that, or other issues that, that we should be?
All right, it was a big rainstorm today, and I, I caught the end of it where it actually wasn't raining enough to go outside, but, you know, my street, Elmwood, turns into a river, it's this hill going down to the gutter, and it was interesting to try to figure out, like, well, what's contributing to that river, right, up the, up the hill? And like, my, my, sort of unscientific opinion was, was the septication was the biggest contributor, the big part of the parking lot is draining directly onto Elmwood and then right into a storm sewer, and it's literally a river down the street. And it, it goes to this notion of, I mean, we, maybe we need to address the septic lot as a, as a management practices, but again, it's like, we need to think about the impact of parking and what it's really doing to the policy of the.
Oh, sorry, I'm not looking at the chat. I did want to, I don't even know how to get back to it.
President, just to thank you, I think, Simon, regarding the accessory securers and zoning code issues, you wanted to share your findings.
Kevin, first, I want to apologize for not seeing your, your note, I'm sorry, and we would welcome your comment.
Thank you. This particular topic is probably one of the biggest questions for consultations I see currently, that isn't addressed in the code or, or just strictly prohibited, so it's good to see something that might be coming up. A lot of people obviously don't like the answer, no, you just can't do it. So just in general, just if you guys have anything, like the notes that you have here, if you just want me to, to review them for potential conflicts that I could foresee with either zoning or, or building or anything, I'm happy to do so. As I'm sure, I believe, James, Heidi, and I apologize, I believe some of the other members with architectural backgrounds, there are, you know, the building and fire codes will cover the window openings and fire separation distances, that'll all be covered. My concern is, this might be a question for John Walco, is, I don't believe a zoning permit can substantiate vested rights for a building permit, I just don't want to see a zoning permit be issued and a building permit application come in, and it's, it's shut down for a variety of reasons. That just don't work. I don't want people to get ahead of themselves and invest money in building permit plans and architectural plans that are just going to get shot down, whereas they, they were led to believe that, you know, the zoning permit allowed them to do so. So I just, I just had those comments, and I'm happy to help if you need review on this or just my ideas, you know, afterwards, I'm happy to do so.
That's much appreciated, because that would be very valuable. And fortunately, you're the point person for both types of permits, right?
Right, yeah.
Well, no, that's good, because, I mean, we can see how the interface works from a one-stop source. So thank you, thank you, Kevin, that would be very valuable.
And also, one thing that I've seen a lot, I'm not necessarily recommending this, but there are a lot of communities who, at least at first, allow accessory dwelling units, but require that they be occupied by a family member of the, that someone in the principal line. Again, I'm not saying that's a better way to do it, but sometimes it can feel like, it feels like too much to just allow everyone, not everyone, but a large number of people to suddenly have a residential unit, but some need to study to think this out, which is requiring in the code that it be occupied by a, a family member, which is a possibility considering.
So I'm curious, I'd be curious to know how that could be, and I also would, would point out, our, our code defines a family or whatever, I mean, the number, the people who can live in a house is like up to five unrelated people. So I don't, I don't, whether you like that part of our code or not, I don't see how you could be stricter than that if you had an ABU, I mean, I think you'd have to say, like, James, I don't know, that's a legal question, but.
I have seen communities do it, again, I'm not saying, like, this is a thing I even necessarily recommend, it probably doesn't make sense to bring up unless you're, you feel like there's a lot of pushback to you a lot. But what they, what people do is they define it differently, like saying, accessory dwelling units must be occupied by a relative race related through marriage, adoption, or, or birth, I guess, from, to someone in the, we live. And even if their definition of family is different from that, which most are, most, most allow often for unrelated people to live together, people have, they still will define it for the purpose of the ABU, rather than referring to the definition, and we will say, this is a party, this is a party.
Then that's, that's a good question for us to discuss. So thank you for bringing it up.
Information.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, we have started to think about other codes we could read, so you've kind of cut that homework a little bit down a little bit. Any other comments or thoughts? So the only other question I'll ask before we call it a night is, what, what I'm telling you came out of two conversations that Jim and Heidi and I had, that we're willing, quite happy to dippy the work up, if others would like to work on these issues, and maybe take them a step further, having heard the reactions and comments. them a step further, having heard the reactions and comments. And if there are, anyone, anyone would like to volunteer tonight, that would be much appreciated. And if you'd like to think about it and volunteer later, that would be appreciated. Any aspect of this, the infill or the A D U's, I think are two separate issues, if you have an interest in that.
Oh, I thought it...
Which one, which topic interests you?
It's all interesting.
Okay. All right, so that's one live volunteer. Okay. Well, my goal is, it is important to move these conversations along, because I think, I think they are, they're on people's minds, Council's asked us to look at some of these things, and I think they are kind of helping us, they'll help us get ahead a little bit of what we might see if the historic district during this is approved by Council. And so I think it's important for us to keep moving apace. So I'll see if we can put some little groups together and work on these, and come back with some more thorough reports. With that, I will ask, the last item of business, is there any public comment on any other matters tonight? Anyone left besides us? Okay, I do not think so. No public comment on any other matters? Okay. I'd like to thank everyone who came tonight. It's particularly nice to see the zoning officer and Borough Engineer right here helping us along with these conversations, as well as our normal attendants from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Thank the public and the applicants. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn now.
I so moves.
All right. Jim, Warrenwell moves. Any second, any second? Jim Spear, all in favor of adjourned? Thank you, we'll see you Monday night.